All right, good afternoon, everybody. We're here for the work session for the City of Sims Council meeting. The meeting is called to order what is the time?
3:04.
3:04. Called to order at 3:04, roll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Walshy.
Here. Very good. The next item is number three. Approval of the minutes from previous work session council meeting of August 15th, 2017. You have those in your packets. If you would take a few minutes to look for those. If you haven't already, take your time. We'll give you as much time as you need to look over those. Okay, is everybody, anyone still reviewing the minutes from the last work session? Will they be approved? Along with favor? Any opposed? Good, the minutes from the previous work session are approved. Presentations, the first presentation is Chief Brooks with the August fire report. Welcome Chief Brooks.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Our August monthly fire reports, seventy-six point five-two percent were rescued emergency calls, one point one-four percent hazardous condition no fire, four point five-five percent service calls, eleven point seven-four percent were getting, ten calls, three point zero-three percent were false alarms, and three point zero-three percent were fires. Broken down to major incident types, we had eight fires, two hundred and two rescued emergency medical service calls, three hazardous condition no fire, twelve service calls, thirty-one getting, ten calls, and eight false alarms, for a total of two hundred and sixty-four. Training for the month, company drill training, we had a little over sixty-four hours, continuing education, two hundred and forty-five hours, driver operator training, sixty-five hours, fire and life safety education, forty hours, firefighter health and wellness, ninety-two hours, hazardous materials training, two hours, officer continuing education, one hundred and forty-five, and pre-incident walkthrough on our businesses, we had eighty-two hours for twenty-seven personnel, a little over seven hundred and fifteen hours for the month. So, we're very busy. Our fire inspector did thirty-two business inspections this month. Average response time, average turnout time, that's dispatch to and route. Station one, EMS calls was fifty-five seconds, fire was forty-one seconds. Station two, had a time of forty-nine seconds for EMS, thirty-five seconds for fire. Station three, EMS was a minute, and fire calls was fifty-five seconds for average of all three stations, fifty-four seconds, and that's on your count. Average response time, forty-seven seconds. When we get in route to, when we get on scene, District Two, Station Two's area, seven minutes and twenty-nine seconds. Station three, seven minutes and twenty seconds. Station one, six minutes and thirty-three seconds. I'm missing a couple of slides. I gave y'all organizational chart, I think y'all have it in front of you. And just want to kind of let y'all know where we stand on our personnel at our three stations. Of course, we have a fire chief, training captain, the fire inspector. Station one, if you see the color-coded areas, they represent each shift, the red, this first shift, the green is second shift, and the blue is third shift. Station one, we have a captain, a driver, and a firefighter on each shift. Station two, we have a lieutenant and a driver on each shift, and a lieutenant and a driver on each shift at station three. Station one, right now, our KME pumper is running out of that station, that's our brand-new pumper, two thousand and fifteen. Station two, the nineteen ninety-eight Ferrari pumper, just went out of service from transmission problems, so we've had to put our reserve truck. It's a nineteen ninety-eight model, so it's almost twenty years old. And then, station three, we're running our nineteen ninety-eight Ferrari ladder out of it. We just got the maintenance report back on it, it's almost ten thousand dollars. We're waiting to put that in the shop after the aerial class that our training officers will be teaching next week. Reserve trucks, we have that two thousand E1 pumper that we're going to put on GovDeals, that we've outgrown that truck, it's only a two-man cab, and then we have a reserve nineteen ninety-eight International Pumper that we just put in service out of station two. So, put it next slide. So, I was asked to present some capital expenditures, and one of the things I've got to start looking at is replacing some of our engines. We've got a couple that's over twenty years old. Usually, after ten years of service, they're put in reserve, so we're running some of these trucks first out. So, I would love to see us purchase a mini pumper, which is half the size of a full-size pumper, and it still get credit for ISO. Our ladder truck is a twenty-year-old truck, you know, we spend anywhere from eight to twenty thousand dollars on it a year after our aerial inspection, so, you know, we need to start thinking about replacing the ladder truck. I think we can get a couple more years out of it. Future relocation, station three, there's a lot of talk about, you know, where it's located, we timed it the other day, it takes a minute, ten seconds to get from the station to Schillinger's, you know, we could shave that amount of time off of there if we can relocate it back up towards Mockett Road, which is where the majority of our calls are located. Station two, the resurfacing of the driveway, it's around twenty thousand, part of that can be offsetted by South Alabama Utilities, and stay on the right way in the building that we're leasing, so probably can shave some of that off. Station two, expansion, if we're ever going to add more people to that station, we're going to have to expand the dayroom and the dormitorial out, so Mark from Public Works I've gotten with him, and come up with a price of about seven thousand dollars, about a hundred and twenty square feet, that we'll, we can add on to that station. Is that on the slide? All right, I'm missing some slides. I also gave y'all a picture of a Pritchard's Mini Pumper that I was talking about, and that truck is great for getting into places where a full-size pumper can't get. It will save us fuel, it will be better suited for running medical calls, and then we also get credit for ISO. So, that's something that I'm looking at to replace one of our, one of our engines with. Right now, we're only running two engines and a ladder, and according to ISO, we've got to run three engines and a ladder, so my plan would be to purchase a Mini Pumper, put it at station one with the ladder truck, and move engine one to station three. That way, we start running three engines and a ladder to every structure fire, and start getting full credit.
Chief, is this, this truck is for sale?
No, so that's a truck they just purchased, actually inspected out, they got a grant, and so that's something similar that I want to go to. The only thing about that truck is, you know, you can't carry all the equipment that you need on it, you know, it only carries about three hundred gallons of water, you can't put a full complement of ladders on there, and so, but it's, it would be well suited for us, along with our other full-size engines.
Chief, I see that Mobile blocked two of those Mini Pumpers also.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to show that video branding now. This is an independent study that was done on career fire departments, and it just kind of shows you, you know, how much manpower you need at a structure fire. Okay, that's all right. This is an independent study taken for career fire departments, and it's, it just says you need fifteen people on scene when you get to a fire to do all the specific tasks needed. Also, you need to be able to respond with four men on the first engine within four minutes. We're close to that, but it's not where we need to be, and that's just, you know, station locations and adding more manpower, excuse me, more manpower.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Smith? Just one?
No, sir.
Mr. Walshy?
No.
Mr. Platt?
No.
Mr. Webb?
No.
Thank you, Chief, for the information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next will be Mr. Hayoski with an LED streetlight proposition, and this is an addition to existing LED streetlight project. This is new.
All right, a few months ago, I presented information concerning Phase One of street lighting. Jason and I picked out locations mainly based on dangerous curves or dangerous intersections that were dimly lit or not lit at all. All of those have been installed, if you've driven around the city, you've seen them on the curve at Wolf Road, you've seen them on Fire Tower Road, multiple places like that. We've had great feedback from everything that I've heard from that, and we're starting with Phase Two. We've looked at eleven locations so far. We want to use the same type of bulbs, LEDs, a hundred and three watt, LED Liotec, four thousand K. I've been in contact with Alabama Power, just got off the phone with them, walking in here, and I'm going to have a meeting with the engineering, and we'll go out to each location that I'm about to discuss. First would be right at the intersection of Nick Liv Lane and Roberts Lane West. A little bit more, southwards. All right. I know those are, those are big symbols, but that was the only way you could show it on the map when it was zoomed out. The other location, as you can see, due east is going to be Roberts Lane, and Roberts Lane East, if you go north on Roberts Lane, you'll see Roberts Lane and Wolf Road South intersection, continue north, Wolf Road and Northville Drive North intersection, if you continue to go north on the McCrory, you'll be at McCrory Road and Vickers, and then just to the north and to the east of that, McCrory and Apollo Drive. If you go to the southeast, you will be at Pomona Parkway and Harvest Boulevard South, excuse me. If you go to the south, we're going to go to Fire Tower and Ward's Lane, and then the east of that would be Whitestone Drive and Ward's Lane, east of that would be Crestwood Drive and Ward's Lane, and then far north would be Spice Pond Road and Broadus Loop And so, right now, those are eleven that we've identified. I drove around city limits at night, and we go through just to kind of check and see which areas were pitch black, especially if you go down Roberts Lane, I mean, there's nothing out there other than an occasional light that maybe someone's paying for themselves, that's face force, they're on, they're on a house. And so, these eleven, it's up to y'all as far as locations that y'all see fit, there may be additional ones added just based on any need.
True.
And we would just, as far as I know, be able to amend the resolution that y'all have already voted on for Phase One, and then Alabama Power would in turn add that to our monthly bill. So, is there any questions?
Mr. Smith, any questions?
I'm glad you're on the case, it sounds like a great addition for the city.
Mr. Watts? Mr. Webb?
What did we do this summer?
Well, we did, we did before, we did.
We did nineteen, plus three intersections, major intersections.
I don't think, yeah, in.
Too bad curves, go ahead.
No, sir. Mr. Webb's right, yeah, well, we're doing these as we can finance them and become aware of them.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and explain.
There's too big curves there on Fire Tower Road, but I don't live over that way, but I can do that night, and there are a lot of it. We've had people southbound that go out into the yard, the people that live there, and coming back the other way in the other curve down there, we've got people off, not off the highway, running too fast, but they can see that curve, and it's just really a great, great idea.
Right.
We think, we thank everybody for that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Platt?
Yeah, I think we've done.
What has occurred over at, what have you done at House Berry and Fire Tower?
That was one that I guess necessarily wasn't in our city limits, but was still inside of our PJ, and close enough for us to go ahead and take care of it. We spoke with Millau County, and they were okay, that was one of the ones that were done in Phase One. I know Jason and I had gotten a couple calls as far as why the mounting arm was oriented the way it was, and not more towards House Berry, and I spoke with Alabama Power after that, and it was because of the wires and all the lines that were in the way.
Have you been back out there since those lights were installed?
Yes, sir.
And how does it look?
It's very evident, very, you're able to see that there is that intersection there, whereas before, you know, you'd be driving down there, and you'd almost miss the curve, there's a lot of wrecks there as well.
Reason I ask is, do you think you could do some more? Here's twenty-eight people that want a little bit more, but.
Well, I think that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
He wants it included.
If you've been out there, would you just, do you think it would help if you'll look at it and?
There could always, there could always be more, especially in that curve, I guess, at House Berry, I guess the thing that it would be more dependent on is if we're willing to do more lights outside of just the city limits into our PJ as well, which ours is covered by our fire department and through Millau County Sheriff's Office.
I don't think we'd have trouble, any trouble getting the council to approve it because of the number of people that want it improved, so if you would just check into it, and the only other question I've got is, have you worked with the SO and asked them about where they would like it?
I have not at this point, but I can.
I appreciate that.
And I'll just say from being Jason, we're willing to do as many as possible as we can support.
Sure. I appreciate it, Mr. Platt giving us that list. If you can add that to your, to your research, and maybe do a cost estimate. And I'd encourage the rest of the council, if you have any streets or danger zones or problem areas that you would like to have looked at, get it to Todd. And so, good. Mr. Platt, anything?
And you understand this is not criticism, I'm not a great job.
No, no, no.
It's just that now that you've done a great job, they want more.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Mr. Walshy, questions, sir?
No.
Okay. Before we go to Item C, I didn't want to ignore our Sheriff's Department. Captain Robinson's here today. I know that we have traditionally, for every two-week period in the past few months, been averaging about over five hundred calls from the Sheriff's Department to citizens within their police jurisdiction. Do you want to elaborate on that, or?
I've actually got some stats, I think.
Oh, please do.
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation? If not, I have here, I mean, the reporting times that he gave me were from the sixteenth of July through to August fifteenth, and basically, calls for service during that timeframe was eleven hundred and seventy-two, which is up eighty-eight from last year timeframe.
Eleven hundred and seventy-two calls?
Right.
Okay.
Over that period of time.
All right, very good. You're up.
When, probably second to five, but, you know, our primary calls of service from two thousand and seventeen is nine-one hangups, they've kind of, they've kind of went up or decreased quite a bit, and the reason for that is, is how we catalog them. We don't catalog everything under a sixty-three circumstance anymore, suspicious circumstance, we catalog it as what it is. And if it develops into something bigger, then it denotes a different code, but that's mainly the reason. You know, you talk about nine-one hangups, it's cell phones, it's, you get, we get tower locations, and that's what we respond to, literally going to areas where there's a tower, and we look, we're looking for problems. Normally, we always go, we always leave the area without, unfounded, you know, because we're responding to people who have just phones, or service has been cut off, but nine-one-one still works, and it really takes up quite a bit of service time dealing with this, because this happens frequently. That's, you know, they're up a little bit as well, you can see where last year, two twenty-six versus fifty-four this year, same timeframe, you know, a lot of this goes down to people leaving their cars unlocked. There's a big trend right now, especially with youth. Now, it's going to, it's going to decrease since kids went back to school, but they call it lock bumping or door bumping, they just hit the door locks, and the easiest way to stop that is to lock your cars. And it's been all over the news, all over our social media, please lock your cars, there's nowhere safe. They're hitting carports, they're hitting garages if you leave them open, and there's a group coming, we know, out of Eight Mile of Pritchard, who are coming around dropping folks off, they hit them, then they steal a car, and they go back to Pritchard in it after they're done. So, you know, this has been going on for a while, it's just become really trendy this year. The other thing is stolen vehicles, you know, we had, we had seven during this timeframe last, last year, same timeframe, we had five, we're up two. We can pretty much discern that most of our stolen vehicles is done by a group of people, and a couple individuals that I'm going to talk about here in a few minutes that we've actually arrested. Our residential burglaries, they've increased, again, it's the same thing, a lot of these residential burglaries was done by the same exact people involved. The next slide, you'll see the commercial burglaries, they're actually down, you know, and normally, again, it's a specific group that's targeting these commercial burglaries. You know, if you remember back, last year specifically, the pharmacy, Sims Pharmacy, was getting hit quite a bit, you know, that was the same individuals that were hitting that pharmacy, that's hitting the ones in Theodore and Grand Bank, you know, so, once we were able to catch them, they're actually caught in the city, you know, that kind of solved that problem. Again, the vehicle burglaries, you know, they're, they're actually down, you know, during this particular reporting period, probably if you go back a month or so, they were probably up quite a bit because of, in the middle of summer and having these same problems we've been having. Commercial alarms, you know, they're actually down too, again, it's, you know, Walmart started closing their doors in this shopping center after midnight, and that helps quite a bit. I mean, you'd be surprised how many calls we get just dealing with the commercial issues right here at Walmart. Significant events on the next slide, you're going to see probably one more of them, maybe one more, there you go. We had, we had, back in August first, we had an ATV that was stopped right here off Redstone and Fire Tower around the corner, and both of them were arrested, one of the individual, on the next slide, you'll see that Lonnie Odom Jr., which was all over the news, he was responsible for quite a few residential burglaries and vehicle thefts in this area. He had just got out of jail on like a Friday and was breaking into stuff on a Sunday. We chased him for two weeks, and that two weeks' time, I think, we, he had four warrants on him, and we actually charged him with a receiving first and a few other stolen vehicles during this timeframe. This was one of the females he was with, the second time we got, we were able to arrest her, we had another female he was with prior to this stop, which is back in July. The next, the next slide's going to denote, on the fourth, we stopped an occupied vehicle with two males in it, and they were also arrested right there on Ward's Lane. Most of these, these elements tend to cluster in certain places, and that's basically what we've done, we've determined the locations, and we essentially started staking them out and watching them, and it's basically like hunting over a bay to field, is what it is. So, it's helped us quite a bit, we've been really successful with that. The next slide shows, denotes the Richard Redmond subject, you know, who was arrested for receiving first, and three different possessions of control substance charges and a drug paraphernalia charge. And the female that was with him, Sidney Smith, she was also arrested for a burglary third. Come to find out that he lives on, his, his family live on Fire Tower Road, he had just got out of prison, and they were, actually, the car that they found was parked in his mother's. parked in his mother's driveway, loaded down with a burg, a burglary that just occurred on Children's Road the night before. So it broke down. So, you know, no reliable transportation. The, the next event's gonna be where, again, going back to, uh, you know, Jarvis Lane, uh, I'm sorry, not Jarvis Lane, Redstone, same area, Lonnie Odom Jr. That, that's the area that they live in, right there off Redstone. Um, and again, more vehicle stolen. That was another one he was charged with too. And, and that's been the, the whole case all year long. Again, Amy Jarvis was with him, uh, a second time, right, on the next slide. She was also charged with, you know, theft first or stolen, or receiving stolen property. You know, a lot of this, guys, is the fact that they're getting out so soon, all right? There's very little deterrent, you know, for whatever reasons it may be, you know, that we're just not able to lock up nonviolent offenders, you know? They just don't stay in jail very long. They're able to get bonds, they're able to get out. And what do you say? You keep them in jail? I mean, and, and take the room away from the violent offenders because that's the other side of it. We're, you know, we're running anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 people in a jail that's designed to hold 900 every day, you know? So, and it's been that way. It's been a lot worse and right now it's actually down. So, you know, there's really nothing for the courts to do about it. Uh, again, Lonnie Odom was arrested and this time, this last arrest, they actually revoked his bond and he stayed in jail. He's on no bond right now, waiting, uh, probation revocation. That's really, really all we had for that reporting period. You know, if, if you look back, most of these cases that we have are trending around a select few of individuals and once we can identify who they are and take them out of the equation, then it goes away. I mean, now that school's back, you know, you're, you're gonna see a lot of our vandalism or, or general theft stuff, it's gonna drop off because the kids have somewhere to be, you know? And it is what it is, you know? We've got, uh, a situation right now currently where our manpower in Sims consists of, um, basically you have two full-time deputies that are on 24/7 and a supervisor who works a day shift, you know? If y'all's budget allow it, we would like, would love to increase that to where we have two full-time deputies and a supervisor who's on 24/7. Not to mention, uh, Corporal Hardy staying as the administrative supervisor for the, for, for the City of Sims. And he has two more supervisors that are on shift. So just, you know, you have three responding units per shift. You know, if we had two more additional deputies, we would like to see y'all looking, doing maybe in October. That would help tremendously. If you've got a bunch of money and you're feeling really frosty about it, we love a detective. But at the end of the day, you know, we'd much rather have the people, the, the deputies on the ground answering calls, servicing, servicing the citizens of Sims. Anybody got any questions for anything that I talked about?
And the number for the month was what?
Uh, 11... Let's see. 1,172.
Okay. 1,172 calls responded to...
Right.
...within the City of Sims Police Jurisdiction.
Right.
Okay.
Captain, the calls are broken down. That, this is, those calls are not, uh, you're totally for, uh, you're, you're Northside units, that's for Sims.
That's your Sims, Jay. That's nothing, has nothing to do with the Northside.
That's Sims and Jay.
That's the jurisdiction of Sims.
Okay.
And city limits and jurisdiction.
That's a mile and a half out from any point on the...
Right.
How do you code, um, suspicious persons, con artists, door to door?
Well, you know, a lot of it has to do with the, the responding deputy. We, we've tried to get away from 63, we call it suspicious circumstance, and we went to an investigation call, which is a 64. Now, does that make any sense? Well, one actually denotes criminal activity, the other is just an administrative clearance, all right? So that allows us, you know, that's the beauty of stats. I can make a sandwich look like a hot dog if you give me 15 minutes and, you know, a couple sheets of paper. Stats can be put in any direction you want, you know? And what we're, we're trying to do is be as transparent as we can because that's the one thing about our sheriff. We don't wanna get in a situation where we're relying on stats. It is what it is. We have a criminal element in, in Mobile County and our job is, is to fight it the best we can. The more we can get our citizens involved and, and, involved in what we're doing and in the equation to help us, the better off we'll be. And, but the codes, you know, we've started trying to dial back on 63s because if they're not really that. And our dispatchers are like anybody else. They'd much rather label something as a 63 circumstance than a domestic violence call or, or something in that level, you know? Our deputies respond to, uh, two people having an argument in the house as a domestic violence call if it goes out. Well, if they get that and it stays that way, they're required to do so much paperwork involved in that, all right? If there's no signs of violence and there's been no, no, no reason to believe there was violence there, then it's just changed to a 64. So it only requires them to report instead of having effect on arrest, right? And, and people do have disagreements all the time when there's no sign of violence. So you understand that. But if, if a dispatcher's on, on one end of the line and she's getting a phone call from somebody that's upset, heated because they've been in an argument, like, it can sound like anything, you know? So, um, you really don't know till you get there because it's so, it's, it's, it's so one-dimensional over a telephone versus people being there who sees it, who understands the scenario, is able to work through it, you know? Uh, it's just like burglar alarms versus theft of property, you know, car, you know, car alarms, you know? We show up because Walmart's called in an alarm, but it may not be at Walmart. It may be in the parking lot and, and an alarm's going off on the car. Somebody called from the parking lot at Walmart. Well, because it's came in from Walmart, it comes out as commercial until we get there and we, we, we realize it's an individual complaint and not a commercial complaint, which is two different categories, you know? And obviously, you know, it depends on which deputy responds and how they go about categorizing themselves because ultimately, that's, that's what we go by, is the deputy's decision. Now, what we try to do is educate, train our deputies to give them the, you know, what they need to make the right decision. And you hope they do that, just like everybody else, you know? Sometimes they get it right. Yes, sir.
How do they recover their stolen goods here in Sims? How do they go about if, if something's, you know, broke into and stolen?
Well, if it can be recovered, I mean, you know, a lot of times, uh, a, a theft case or some residential theft, uh, case, case in point, uh, three weeks ago, I was leaving Walmart. Male's walking through the parking lot carrying a weedy on his shoulder on a Sunday. I get on the phone, he's, he's going right to the pawn shop. You can see him going right to the pawn shop on the alleyway. Get on the phone, call the dispatcher, "Hey, anybody got a theft of property?" "Yeah, we just had a bunch of tools stolen right up the street." So get a unit over here. Yeah, we're gonna get it right back to him, right then and there, no problem. Take him into custody. The guy literally just walked, walked to his carport, took his stuff and left, put some stuff in the woods and he was taking it one, one part at a time to the store. So we weren't making a case on him. No big, you know, just because I was in the right place at the right time, which a lot of that, you know, denotes. But in general, if some things are never recovered, depending on what it is, hopefully that we've got serial numbers. The best thing to do, you know, in any case is tell your constituents to write all their serial numbers down, make sure they keep values, make sure they have pictures, you know? Just don't put it on a computer and think that's enough. Print it out, put it safe somewhere because what if they stole your computer? You know, they've got all your information with everything else on it, you know? But the bottom line is, it's really common sense, you know? Theft's been around for thousands of years. I mean, it, ultimately, you've just gotta lock your doors, you know? You've just gotta keep your doors locked and be responsible for your, for, for what's yours, you know? Your own property, you know? How many times have you just, have you saw lawnmowers left at the street and things like that because they're going to get gas and they just leave it there? You know, 30 years ago, you could do that. Now you can't, you know? Because people run off with it. I mean, this area is growing tremendously and it has, and it's gonna, going to continue. Everybody wants to move out this way, you know? And with that, you get a lot of traffic, you know? And because of that, there's no, there's no way to discern the good or the bad and all that, you know? And with the good, you're gonna get some back, you know? Lots of them make friends with people anyway. And that's all we can do is we can prepare to deal with the honest folks and not the bad ones, you know? If that makes sense, you know? I mean, is there any way to stop it? All we can do is try to deter it as best we can. And we can try to put, put good guys out there who's, who's wants, wants to catch them, you know? That's the thing, yeah. Right now, we've got a very, fairly decent crew and if we increase our numbers up here, what we're gonna probably do is take a couple of our guys and make a proactive detail where they just don't work a set schedule. They work the high crime, um, schedule, which, you know, for a young police officer, it's, it's, it gives him the ability to fight crimes, suppress evil because he's gonna be out there on the midnight shifts, he's gonna be out there on the holidays, he's gonna be out there when it's really happening, you know? It takes a group to do that. And we call it, we do this in the rest of the county and call it directed, our directed units. And basically what we do is we, we take these stats that we have and we figure out that, you know, Fire Tower Road is obviously an issue. So we take these units and we place them on Fire Tower Road to look for the traffic where these bad guys live at. So we can catch these bad guys out and about, you know? And ultimately, able to develop cases on them. And one of these particular individuals was caught by, you know, was fortunate enough to be caught by Sims units, the Odom one was. You know, actually Corporal Hardy was one of the people who was responsible for catching Mr. Odom, you know? So, which goes a lot for him because this guy, we, we, we've been chasing him with dogs and everything for about a week and a half before Brad was able to catch him, you know? So it's just knowing where they live and, and watching it, you know? We, we knew that. We knew he had two locations and we were watching both of them, you know? So, you know, it kinda paid off. Luck helps too. I mean, it's not always, it's not, it's not always skill. Luck helps a lot, you know, is what we did. Anybody else?
Mr. Smith, any questions? Appreciate the report.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Webb, any questions?
No. Thank you. Thank you very much. Be careful.
Mr. Platt, any questions?
No. Thank you, Captain.
Mr. Lawson?
Normally I would add, you know, I, I live on, I live on Fire Tower Road right there. We're at the intersection you were talking about. And it hasn't, them LED lights have made an impact on Fire Tower Road. You know, I mean, you know, are we having wrecks there? You know, the wrecks probably are not gonna stop, but you, that intersection's really lightened now and those curves that they did fix has made a big difference. And I drive it all hours a month, you know? And it really, I wish you could come down to my neighborhood and put in about 40 in my neighborhood. But, uh, I mean, Fire Tower Road, it's made a big difference. It really has. We really appreciate it over there.
If you will, just pass it on to public works. Let them know where.
Yeah. We're reviewing all the lights and adding to it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, before we get to Item C, we're gonna be talking about, uh, Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith's gonna be talking about the proposed budget, the draft proposed budget for next fiscal year. What I want to mention to the council is this, the information you're gonna be given today, we want you to take it home, we want you to study it, we want you to ask questions. You have 10 working days to do that. And please, I encourage each and every one of you to come by my office, come by anyone's office working for the city, connected to the city, and ask questions so that we, when we reconvene in two weeks, the questions shouldn't be that many. If we need to amend or adjust something, we can do that. But please, I'm asking you to take this information you have, take it home, study it, make your comments. If you have questions, again, call me, call City Hall, call City Clerk. We'll work with you on that. But we need to nail this thing down at the next meeting so we can have this budget approved long before one October. So I just wanted to mention it to you, uh, before Mr. Smith starts. So I appreciate your help on that. And, uh, Mr. Smith, that said, we now move to you for the proposed budget for 2017, 18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Get some late financial information. I want to, uh, thank our financial department. Our entire financial department is DJ Wally. Normally it takes, um, several days or a week to get all the financial information at the end of the month. Knowing this meeting was coming up, she jumped on in and got it at dawn practically on the September the 1st. And we really appreciate it. She knew that we would want to know what was going on here in our city with our finances. Mr. Mayor and council and esteemed attendees of this meeting today. On behalf of the Finance Committee of the City of Sims, I want to present our proposed budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, which begins October the 1st, just a few short weeks away. The information I have handed out here is very much to the point. Your Finance Committee has been looking each month as the months have gone by to see what's happening with finances. There've been a lot of questions about what's gonna happen to the economy in this country and, of course, we're very keenly aware of, of potential problems and things that might go up or down. So we've been looking each month at the performance. That means the income from various different tax sources and the expenses of the rest of city. As, uh, we jumped in, of course, the Baker Administration took over when the final, when the actual fiscal year was well underway. And so, um, notice there was some pretty strong action at the beginning of the year here where expenses jumped up above the income. That was a little bit alarming and we did watch that very closely. The, uh, thing we're looking for is to try to forecast the income that we might work with for the coming year. If you look down in the lower left-hand corner of your chart there, you'll see some colored lines, but you'll see a little black straight line. That's generated by the computer program to try to determine for us what the trend is. At the beginning of the year, that trend line was upward, just slightly upward. As the days went by, the years, months went by, that tilted over to its point slightly downward. A little bit discouraging. However, maybe we know more than it knows and maybe we know that that is not deemed to be significant, but it is significant in that we are treating that as a level line. That is to say, we're not looking for, uh, naturally, a lot more money to be coming in next year. We're gonna be working on bringing in more money, but right now, we just have to go with the numbers. And we are saying that we are forecasting that the City of Sims will receive $6.1 million in the coming year. We finally, uh, took that in consideration. And by the way, on this chart here, you see, uh, information Ms. Wally provided for us, which has already been put in. So you have 11 months, 11 complete months of financial data. But we're having to forecast for the future with one month left to go. We think we have a pretty good handle on it, but anyway, you'll be the final judge of that. So with that in mind, and if you look on your budget proposal here, you'll see at the bottom, the sources of income that we are looking at and expecting. You'll see how we arrived at the $6.1 million. Note for the folks who are, uh, really interested in this, that the, uh, some of these funds are restricted funds. They can only be used for roads and related things. There are other restrictions on some other funds, but in any case, we are taking them in the whole. It gets down to actually spending funds. We'll make sure that we're using restricted funds for asphalt and unrestricted funds for for tools and equipment. Speaking of that, let me, um, tell you this, the Finance Committee, and there are actually two members of the Finance Committee with us here, Commissioner Jeanette Byrd right here and Commissioner and Councilman Lawrence Webb over here on the committee. So they were very strong in several things. One of those was that we would only be talking about operating funds. For the benefit of our audience here today, if I could make the differentiation between operating funds and capital investments. You buy a car, you drive it for three or four years, you put in gasoline, that's operating expense. The capital expense is the car. After me, I buy a car, maybe secondhand, and drive it for twelve or fourteen years and put in tires, battery, oil, gasoline. That, those are operating expenses, but the price of the car was the, that was the capital expense. Councilman Webb over here will buy a vehicle and drive it for maybe twenty-five years and put a lot of tires, a lot of gas in. That's operating expense, but the original cost, which is now spread over all those years, that's capital expense. Our mayor, Baker, will buy a pickup truck, drive it for thirty years, make it, and keep on driving it until somebody offers him a million dollars and collects it. That's capital, okay? All the gas, all that's operating expense. We are working around getting our bookkeeping system going so that we are talking about operating expense in this budget. Capital expenses will be a whole different thing. The Finance Committee absolutely positively would not let me talk about proposals for capital spending at this time. They put their foot down and I now see the wisdom of that. So we are just talking about keeping on, keeping on. What does that include? That includes payroll expense. That's the big item, payroll expense. We have quite a few people now working for this city. Pretty big operation. Do we have the pie chart, please? Thank you very much. You may have a, do you have a copy of the pie chart working there? If you don't, it's going to come up on the screen in just a moment. I think we do.
Do you want the operating or the distribution?
Let's do the distribution first. There we go. Well, that's, yes, okay, that's the distribution. Right there we see that the money that we're talking about spending on operating, third item, you'll see the blue is what? That's policing. The red is, uh, car and rescue, okay? The green is Public Works by a special request of the Public Works Department. And the pink or magenta there, that's City Hall. We have four ladies who run City Hall, okay? Now, the yellow contains four fractional items, smaller things all grouped together there just to keep from getting it splintered up too much. So the picture, though, is, the pie chart there is on purpose because it gives us a pictorial reference of how much we're spending on the different departments. The big numbers there, you can see we're talking about spending a million and a half dollars on the fire department. We look pretty closely at that. We feel like that that is, is a pretty good number. Covers the payroll for the fire department and, um... You'll notice the pay for the fire department is $1,288,000 on our budget proposal here. So the lion's share of that, uh, the fire department is payroll. Now, right here, we're looking at our overall budget proposition. Okay? On your left side, you see all of the income, $6.1 million. On the right side, you see all of expenditures plus another thing that the Finance Committee insisted we show right on the face here, and that is $500,000 at the bottom there for the Budget Stabilization Fund. This is not actually an expense. It means we're transferring money from one pocket to the other. We're transferring it to this other account. We still have that money, but it is excluded from our usage in operating the city. So we're going to consider it for this presentation as being an expense. At some later date, we'll probably want to talk about, and when we talk about our capital plans for the future, we'll want to talk about that money that's in the Budget Stabilization Plan. Right now, we're just talking about a budget for us to keep on, keeping on, and we're talking about adding the amount on the right side, which is $5.1 million available for operations. The part on the right is the part that goes into all these different departments we show on the distribution. We'll hop back to this distribution again. The part on the right goes back and is distributed to the different departments in this manner. This will be a good time for me to stop and ask if you have a question. A question come into your mind yet? No questions? I might answer a question that you might ask. Why is so much money in administration? Well, here's one of the reasons. Things that cover the entire city operation are often like insurance, very, very big, high-ticket insurance policies. They're swept into administration. In the future, we'll probably have our bookkeeping system distribute those costs so that it's, it shows it where it should be, each fraction of it around it. But right now, many expenses of the whole operation are swept into admin, administration. So it's not quite as top-heavy in administration as you, you might imagine it. Okay? Any other questions? No other questions? Okay. Then let's take a, I'm not going to read the budget to you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Mr. Mayor, if, uh, if you think it appropriate, I would like to discuss my Public Safety Report while this is on the screen because I'm always looking for money for public safety.
Well, probably.
What's your recommendation? Let me finish this and then we'll, and then approve the budget and then we'll talk about that. Approve what's... All right, if we go back now to the, uh, this leaves, if, if we, we hold to this, if we receive the $6.1 million and if we hold our expenses to the $5.1 million, that leaves us under, a little under $1 billion, which is available for capital expenditures. That's what I would propose. Think that we have our, many of, most of our departments are already operating full up. We could probably add several thousand people to our population and still be covered. Certainly, our fire department already covers well out of our range. That's not to say we can't make constant improvements. That's, but I'm just saying they're, they are full up. It's not just a part-time thing anymore. They are really on the case. Incrementally, there'd be more expenses for the, uh, Public Works as we take in more territory, of course. But in terms of being capitalized, that is having heavy equipment and having the management overhead, there's only incremental expense there as you increase. So what I'm saying is we have pretty much a full-up government and a government operation. Uh, we could, we could probably take a couple more thousand people in our city limits and, and not have to expand our budget very much at all. Back to the, what I'm saying here is that that money that's coming out there that's left over, just under a million dollars on this proposed budget, is not money to throw away frivolously and none of us would want to do it. And the public should understand that we're not talking about just increasing our expenses to put the, uh, the over there. That is, I would propose, is what we need to use for, uh, building, doing things that will go into capital investment, which people can use for twenty, thirty, forty years. And we'd be talking about capital on a different day. Today, we're just talking about this as proposed distribution of our funds to keep on, keep on operating. Let's talk about budget theory for just a moment. Budgets are done in very different ways. Some, um, you know, you, you, at the end of the budget year, if you haven't used all your money up, uh, in some cities, some operations, uh, the department gets to keep those funds and roll them over, uh, or carry them over, as they say. We don't do that. It's like a new ballgame every year. It's like a new football game, like you don't go back and take the excess score from last year's Alabama Auburn game and bring it forward. It's a clean start every time. Uh, your bragging rights are in doing a better job at a lower cost every year, saving, you know, beating the budget, making, uh, doing the job and saving money on the budget. Uh, it's a, it's a yardstick. It's a management tool and we're going to try to get all of our people to, uh, play the game, uh, straightforward fashion, that is to say, charge, uh, expenses to the right department. So next year, we can refine our budget and over a period of time, the budget and the operation will be in closer harmony. Okay, there's a lot of things that we've done. We've had lots of discussions. Uh, we've had many versions. We've done a lot of scratching on the paper, changing things. There are just a few things actually that are novel, slightly novel, in this budget. Don't want to slip anything by on anybody. Trying to improve, uh, as we go. Uh, if you'll, if you look on a previous budget or financial, you'll see that a number of local operations are listed with some money for advertising for each one, number of events. And then over here, another place in our books, the same organizations are listed with grants. And it's like, um, they keep getting added on here. What we're proposing to do is to, uh, have a one-stop shop here and give, the ones that we want to give grants to, the funds, do it appropriately, legally, of course, but keep the eye on the ball instead of having it fractured here, there, and yonder. Uh, another thing we've done is, uh, we have here some proposals that, uh, one of the Finance, uh, member, the committee members obtained. We went around, interviewed some of the high school principals, uh, school principals, not just high school, and found some of the things that we could identify, that we could really do, that were identifiable, projects small enough, uh, to handle, something that we, where we could actually help out some of the local schools. And, uh, so we have $36,000 for that. Senior Center is adding a lot of space, big, uh, room in the back of their building there, and they're asking for, uh, additional funds for previous years. And so we are proposing $30,000 from the Senior Center. And they have promised that anytime we want to meet at their place, they'll be happy to have us. Uh, so we'll have to expand our city limits out to take them out. The Boys and Girls Club, uh, asked for $30,000 and we have that in the budget. We have $20,000 in for the Heritage Park, which is, um, demonstrably our one claim to historical thing here and something we, of course, we want to make sure we maintain. So other than that, we have, uh, $44,000 for what we call community outreach. There are a large number of activities that go on and want to bring these into a situation where, uh, we evaluate these things and see if they're valuable to citizens or not and either continue doing them or approve doing them or just continue to do it. Not just let them all automatically go along from year to year. Let's see what else we have. Any other questions on that particular subject? That's under admin there.
Mr. Smith, were we supposed to have a copy of what you're reading from?
Yes, I thought everybody had a copy of that.
Anything, anything you don't see will get you...
I, well, I thought we had a copy of each one. I'm sorry. We'll, uh...
We'll get your copies. Anything you see on the board you don't have, we'll make sure you...
Yep, yep. I thought everybody had a copy. My bad. Okay, then I won't get too far into the weeds, okay? I still won't read it because you have to see it on paper. Basically, in effect, that's the package price for each one of those departments and their functions are up there. And what we need to know is if you see anything that we can do different in terms of the division of the money we have with the personnel we have. And that's, that's getting back to what I said earlier. It's imperative that the council take all this data with them and study it, look at each line item, ask questions now, ask questions over the next, preferably five or six working days so that we can get to the final product the next time we need. We don't want to be asking basic questions two weeks from tonight, this afternoon, that we could have researched far, far in advance. So please, take it apart. Make sure before you leave today that you have copies of everything you're supposed to have, that you've seen, that you think you've seen, or everything else you need. Please, take your time and tear this apart and that will help us in the... Any other questions, like an answer on the spot?
Uh, Mr. Smith, we're not going to discuss, um, the capital, um, funds, uh, which would include, I, I would take your budget stabilization fund. My concerns are with that item. I know that you and I have discussed this before, but I would have an issue, honestly, with approving the budget without a discussion about what's going to happen to the stabilization In a rare moment, I mean, I'm, I've spent enough time with you on this budget and I know that it needs to be approved. But we have, we have needs for public safety. It just cannot be met out of this budget unless...
Well, that's, and that's, what you're saying is, that's precisely what we want you to do, is look at the numbers and where you think adjustments need to be made. That's what you're...
Well, the point that I'm making is when will the Budget Stabilization Fund be discussed? Before or after the vote for approval of the budget?
Well, I think, uh, it should be done after we approve the budget. The money is not dissipated. It's in our pocket. Now, that goes into what amounts to available for cop, uh, capital expenditures. Actually, right now, it's earmarked for continuing operations, but we do have a large amount of it and we need to, to review that, I believe. But right now, all we're saying is we need to lock down the regular operating budget. We have a, we need a robust discussion about our future and our plans in terms of, uh, capital, capital improvements.
Your long-range, two- and three-year plan got squashed.
The committee would not permit me to talk about that. My left is still.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll make sure we get the big budget figures to you before we leave today. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Law?
All right. Next item is financial report, review of checks for signature. Who has not looked at the checks today? Anybody? We're not going to vote, of course, not for the regular meeting, but any, are there any questions about the checks for review today? Anyone?
Uh, I have one question. The, uh, the traffic cones, et cetera, was that a purchase or a rental?
Or to be purchased? Okay.
Okay. Good question. Uh, Mr. Webb, any questions about checks? Mr. Lawson? Mr. Watts? Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Very good. We'll move on. Uh, next item is, or I believe, Mr. Seabrook, you're going to talk about the establishing rules for city parks. You have the floor.
All right. Hello, folks. Howdy. Um, just want to talk to you shortly about the park rules. Currently, we don't have any rules out at the parks. Um, we devised a set of rules, one for the splash pad specifically and then the other one that can, that's specifically for familiar park, but can apply to municipal park, honor park, basically all of our parks other than the splash pad. Um, those park rules were put through the Parks and Rec Committee. They were approved at that point to go to legal counsel and I believe I did get the, um, two sets of rules I wanted back from the legal counsel, the revisements and all that. So at this point in time, this, the rules that you're about to see there have been through legal counsel, also have been through the Parks and Rec Committee, have been approved by both and I would like to go forward with them and put them out to the parks.
Okay.
I think mainly the, the rules are very, very much generic. They, they oppose, you know, any kind of loot activity, um, basically setting the hours for the parks from dusk, or correction, from dawn until dusk. It's also setting out, you know, no tobacco products in the parks or alcoholic products. Animals must be leashed while on, in the parks. No horseplay, foul language, or illegal disruptive or destructive or inappropriate activity. Also, in the pavilion areas, we ask that people be courteous. So basically, just park rules that you would generally see with every other park that we've ever been to. We wanted to place them in there so that our park attendants may be able to have some kind of written enforcement. Sure, they do talk to people. kind of written enforcement, or they do talk to people if they're causing any kind of trouble. Any questions, folks?
Well, the copies of the proposed rules are in your packets, everybody has that, right? And so I think what we're talking about here today is, I want the council to review these rules, and make any adjustments, or anything you wish to modify on them, and then we'll place them on the next meeting's agenda to discuss, once they're finalized, and then two weeks later, we can vote to approve. All right? Sound good? Does everybody have what they need? Mr. Watts, you good? Mr. Smith, is that all right with you? Mr. Webb, Mr. Platt, and Mr. Lawson, you good?
I will say, please don't amend them unless you absolutely, I mean, this thing's been going on and on and on.
And, and I will say, once again, the, they have gone through the Parks and Rec Committee.
Sure, it's gone through the middle.
Yeah.
And that's an important point.
Yeah.
You put it through the Parks Committee, you put it through the Correct Hopes, you put it through legal.
Well, they finally come up with stuff to submit to, to the attorney, and the blessing is there.
Okay.
I wanted to ask appropriate dress.
Well, that is a, that's something that we have put into the splash park area.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We, we do ask that there's a appropriate dress.
Yeah.
While you're at the splash pad. There are folks that, the kid, the splash pad's made for kids.
Right.
And what we are asking is that the adults don't try to show off.
Right, right.
As much as possible. But, yes, there is a dress code, or a proposed no lood dress.
Right.
In the splash pad area.
Yeah. I just know today that it's not the children, it's going to be the parents that you're having to tell.
And that's one reason why we, we wanted to put something like that in place.
Yeah.
Because our, our park attendants are very courteous, they try to go in there.
Right.
And promote a family atmosphere. When people come in there and have that kind of, that kind of dress, it does lead to issues with other family members out there.
People get in fights over, get, you know, jealous and that type of stuff, and just...
Definitely. Yes, sir.
Who will determine that?
That will be determined by the park attendants. I've outlined with them very much with detail about what is considered lood and what is considered not. For the most part, we, we really don't want, we don't want anything in there that could very well be construed as being pornographic in nature or anything like that. So as long as they keep it PG, as far as clothing is concerned, we, we really, that's what we're aiming for. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Mr. Webb?
Yes, sir.
How are these, you know, little bit of what he said? How is this enforced?
Well, sir.
The county deputies, they can get involved, or?
To be honest, we, we have park attendants that are out there, and the staff enforces the rules. Now, we've never come across a, a situation where a person has been, that has tried to buck the rules. However, at this point in time, we don't have these rules out there, so these, our park attendants are basically going on what I've proposed to them in the rules.
Right. Oh, no.
Mr.?
It's an ordinance violation. It's an ordinance, it's going to dock it, there's fines and whatnot, just like any other ordinance with a...
How are they enforced?
A work on that.
I think it's suggested that the sheriff department, you know, I don't know, I doubt you could put a monitor where you could actually see what's going on from some, from the sheriff. I mean, I, go ahead.
I mean, I'd like comment, I mean, most of these rules that he's saying are just not local ordinances, they're state statute. So, yeah, there's a problem with loodness, there's disorderly conduct.
Yeah.
That's all enforceable right now without you ever trying to adopt an ordinance, because if you do, you're going to have to try to figure out a way to fine, like we talked about before. State law covers just about everything that's mentioned out there.
So, yeah, what he's saying is...
They're tenacious.
If there's a violation.
I think, I think that they ought to have, on a, a little short thing, that these rules will adhere to, you know, you will adhere to these rules, and subject to Mobile County Sheriff's Department, if not abided by, or something like that, you know, because that way, it takes your attendant out of the situation and puts somebody with authority. You know, even when they just drive up, you know, people look at y'all, you know, but if I drove up and said, you know, if it was my responsibility, the parking wrecks people, they called, the, some of the committee could come and walk out there, that's not going to do anything, but if, but if it's, if it's authority.
We will respond, there should have been complaints, I mean, we're not going to, we can't police the parks, but we will respond to any complaint that's there. So, I mean, yeah, we'll do it.
I just, I just add that the monitoring, the people that you got monitoring has this number, somebody.
And, and that, once these rules are put into place, I want you all to know that there will be policy and procedure in place. Once the rules are enforced, are able to be enforced out there, I will train my folks out there to be able to respond to this in the appropriate manner.
Yeah, okay.
Give them the number, nine one one.
I think they'll be able to get that. Yes, sir.
But anyway, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I'm glad nothing's come up, because, you know, people, I don't know, but with the city grows, there are going to be new types of people, so you got people that, I was at, I was at a sports flex, and the children run around with no clothes on, and the mother was just, and it was smaller children, but again, that was a public, there evidently had, had any thing like this been happening at this place.
Well, definitely, as of right now, the standing order is, if there is anything that does come up, they immediately contact me, and I, and I go from there and take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
So, not a problem there, but once these get enforced, I will, I will put a policy in place for them, and a procedure for them to abide by once that occurs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, items, proposed resolutions for discussion. Items A and B are still tabled, they were tabled for last meeting for thirty days, so I think we're all aware of those facts. If you have any questions regarding resolutions A or B, you can ask the author, Mr. Jason, about that. Okay? Moving on. Item C, seven C, is authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and the Alabama Department of Transportation for the cooperative maintenance of public rights of way. Basically, what we're talking about is a, a good news situation, this regards the new Popeye. And the state of Alabama says that since they are not requiring the sidewalk to be built there, the City of Sims must take appropriate action and paperwork to, to accommodate that, and deal with the insurance and, and all of that. Are there questions about that? Mr. Webb?
How much sidewalk is required?
Says, says sidewalk, the width of the property, I think it's about one hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred fifty feet.
Can handle that.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Platt?
I'm good.
Mr. Lawson?
Mark.
Mr. Watt?
How, how is that insured for the city? I mean, will, will they fall off and hurt themselves or something?
Well, it's, there are two types of insurance that we have, and of course, damage to property is amic, and if it's a damage or an employee is injured, then it's workers comp. And my understanding is, if it's an injury to a civilian, it would fall under amic, is that right?
General ability.
So we have general ability covered by, by our, by our amic insurance.
Okay.
Okay. But, we basically need this approval to go ahead with the project, correct?
Yes.
Without this, they cannot proceed. So this is the one thing, to my understanding, it's stopping the project for the moment, but it's a minor. But we're basically talking about the hundred and fifty feet in front of Popeye's that we would be responsible for if anybody was injured, so we'd have to do paperwork on that.
It's also maintenance, maintenance on the sidewalk.
Yes, yes, yes. We'd have to maintain it. So, any questions, Mr. Smith?
I hope we can expedite this approval.
Okay, Mr. Watts? Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Platt?
Good.
Mr. Webb?
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, this is item seven D, authorizing the mayor to enter in an agreement with Mobile County regarding the utilization of county-owned equipment and operators. This is a, kind of a re-renewal of a contract that's been in place for a while. Essentially, on some of our, our smaller projects, we contract with the county, Mobile County, to provide equipment and their personnel to perform functions for us, for which we are not equipped or staffed. They do this, they do this at a reduced hourly rate by, by employees, and so they go out and do the work, and my understanding is, they perform the work at a fraction of what the normal contracting out process would be. They have the equipment, they have the personnel. This basically states that the agreement will continue, but if they are injured, let's see, make sure I got this right, if they are, if a Mobile County employee is injured on a Mobile County vehicle, working for Sims, Mobile County would not be liable, correct? Okay. So, we would, we would be liable for those actions, because basically, they're working as our agents, correct? Okay. That pretty much makes sense to everybody? Any questions, Mr. Smith, Mr. Webb, Mr. Platt?
Good.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, and then, let's see, leave, we're to committee reports. And finance has already spoken quite a bit, do you have anything to add, Mr. Smith?
At the next meeting of the finance committee, we'll be looking at franchises, make sure we're getting what we're supposed to do. Website is supposed to be live momentarily, and that's our report.
Very good. Mr. Lawson, roadway surroundings.
Well, question I got is, from Jason, is, when they going to fix the road by the Oak Thomas?
Actually, that's part of the resurfacing project that we've got going on now. They just finished resurfacing Hillswood, Don and Paula, and I've called the contractor to ask them, will they give us a price on fixing that area? And they said that they would, when they come to pay the next road, which is Shelley Drive, right next to BWI, they would go ahead and do that for us for free.
Well, is, is Alabama got any liability in this, where they?
They're supposed to pay for it, but if we give it for free, I guess it'll be, we'll just, we'll just send them a bill for the money that we spent on it so far, because we did do the patch, and when we, we had to get some traffic control out there one time, and we saved those bills to send to them.
In fact, you've been working with, with the county to make sure that all the expenditures we've had.
Yes.
For that, from the time, the day the pipe burst until now, has been covered and recaptured. And the idea is that every penny we spend in city funds will be reimbursed by South Alabama Utilities, and I think you're tracking that.
Yes.
Fairly closely, but it is a good question, because it was, it was their responsibility. So, but it's a good question. All right. Mr. Lawson, did you have anything else to say on your committee?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Platt, public safety.
I'm going to reserve mine until our regular session. I have some committee members, though, are, the Vigers have anything for the work session, or anybody?
That item you asked me to check on, I'll speak to you, I guess, later on, maybe a representative will come down and talk to you about that.
Okay.
They could probably speak more eloquently about that than what I could.
All right. And Mr. Bird, anything?
I've been educated somewhat, because of some things that I've seen on C-SPAN, that have to do with major cities, and the fact that the smaller cities are family-oriented is which we should stay. And the major cities are not family-oriented, but they're the uppies and those people that have enough money to have a family and, and put them into expensive housing, you know what I'm saying? Here's the fact, folks. Cities are left, I'm talking about sway towards the left, major cities. The major cities are what's the problem now with the president currently elected. The major cities are against him, they fight him on immigration, they fight him on infrastructure, they fight him on global warming. The top of that is safety. Safety is the most important for the smaller cities and for the larger cities.
Yes.
We need a balance in this country, and somehow or other, we have forgotten that we have a legislature which creates laws, we have judges who should only enforce the laws as they are designed to be followed by the original constitution of this United States, not by the laws that have taken place, that's them, but by the original laws. Third thing is, you have those three parts of our country that should be in balance at all times. I think there should also be a balance between the authority and the population that you have in the major cities compared to the population in the urban and rural areas. You follow what I'm saying? So that we always have people who are on the left, which are hurt and are going to the major cities, younger people who don't know what they're doing, you follow what I'm saying? And don't have any responsibility to raise a family and to take care of a family. The second thing is, we need to have enough people on the other side, in the urban and rural areas, to combat or balance, you follow what I'm saying? So that this country stays in balance, and we can agree to disagree, but still be able to get things done that will make us, this country, progressive and great again.
I think we found our speaker.
No, I voted for him.
Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mr..
Thank you very much.
Mr. Viger? Mr. Platt?
Just as we're kind of still on the public safety communication.
Oh, sure.
I want to stand up where everyone can, can hear. Obviously, we are all watching Hurricane Irma right now. This is going to be a test for our city departments, from Jason, you know, Corporal Hardy, obviously looking over at Chief Brooks. As a city, now's the time to be proactive in that. They're real quick to batches, whenever we don't do anything right, I would start right now with posting, as soon as the website comes up, let's go ahead and start getting the information out, you know, be neighborly, check on your neighbors, what do you need? What can we do? How can I help you? If we as a city, right now, go ahead and start taking that and moving forward with it, then ultimately, it's going to be a positive reinforcement. If it doesn't hit us, great, we just got some practice. One thing that is concerning to me, and I think it's a great time when you're talking about capital improvements and the budget, as well as this committee, we do not have an EOC here within the city specifically to house our personnel with this storm of escape. So right now, as, as we're talking about going forward and into the future, when this topic comes up, you all kind of know why we're asking for it. But outside of that, I would say, from the drainage system, as we know, that was such an issue out in Texas, I'm personally going to go ahead and reach out to the builders in our area, as this storm may approach, pull your barriers, you know, get them away from the drains, because whenever they're in the midst of construction, obviously, they're trying to get, you know, keep trash from getting into it, but right now, we need everything to play. So we certainly don't need that bogged down. We'll do whatever we can to help, I'm sure David will be deployed to the fire station that gets close, but you've got resources here, and I will go ahead and start getting them prepared.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Good comments, appreciate it. And David, you going to hold yours? You did the research, sort of, kind of, maybe?
Sort of, kind of. I would prefer that somebody from that department speak on, on that matter, because they're well versed in what I am.
That's good enough.
I have been out of that process for a long time, and it's just changed so much, I'm not sure I could speak.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Platt?
No, sir, I'm sorry, this, get it all done.
Okay. Are there any council, legal council or staff comments? Any other business that might come before the meeting? All right. We're going to be adjourned. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You vote. We will reconvene for the regular meeting in about ten minutes, let everybody stretch their legs, walk around, connect in about ten minutes, and we will go into the regular session. Thank you, Jesus. Forty-one, the time is four fifty-one. Thank you for your participation today. Meeting is now called or ordered four fifty-one, this is the regular session of the City of Sims Council meeting. Roll call vote, roll call, run, roll call.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Captain over Watt?
Here.
Captain over Smith?
Here.
Captain over Webb?
Here.
Captain over Platt?
Yes.
Captain over Lawson?
Councilmember Lawshie?
Here.
Very good, thank you. We're gonna ask, I was gonna ask, Mr. Bird, would you feel like doing our invocation today? And Chief, would you do our pledge? Okay, please stand.
Mr. Fireheads, Father, we thank you that you're our God, we thank you that you're King of kings and Lord of lords, and that you're not surprised about anything that happens. We thank you, Father, for your wisdom, for we need your wisdom in what to do. Thank you for your safety and your protection for our fire department, for our police, for all of our families, and we thank you, Father, for helping us today to do what is right, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Join me in saying the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you all. Very good. First item of business is the consideration of the minutes from the regular council session on August 15th, 2017. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? If not, please take a few right now. Everybody through, review on their minutes.
Move, we accept the minutes that are presented.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The minutes from the August 15th regular session are approved. We have any presentations or guest speakers today? Very good. Next item is the official approval of all checks for signature. Is there anyone on the council who has not seen the checks for today's approval? Mr. Smith, have you seen them all?
Seen them.
Mr. Watts? Mr. Platt?
Good.
Mr. Webb, a good go. Mr. Lawshie? Move, we approve.
Second?
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshie?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good. The checks are approved for signature. There are no ordinances today. The first two resolutions are tabled from 30 days as of the last meeting. Resolution C and D, is there a motion for immediate consideration? So move, is there a second? It's like a roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshie?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good. As you know, during the work session, we discussed these two. One is the authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Alabama Department of Transportation for the cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way. This is 150 feet of sidewalk in front of the proposed Popeyes. I believe it was discussed in pretty, pretty good detail. Are there any questions? Mr. Lawshie, you have questions about C? Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Webb?
None.
Move, we approve.
Second?
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshie?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Item C, resolution 9C is approved. Moving on, resolution 9D, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Mobile County regarding the utilization of county-owned equipment and operators. I believe we discussed this in rather detail during the work session. Any additional comments or questions, Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Watts?
No, sir.
Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawshie?
No.
Very good. Is there a motion approved?
So move.
Second? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshie?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good. Moving on to comments and announcements, as was said earlier, we're all watching the hurricane cautiously in the ocean, and we're not exactly sure which way it's gonna go. But as you know, we want to encourage people to make sure that they have in their homes adequate supplies, flashlights, canned foods, water, generator if they have them, make sure they have the correct type of fuel. We want to remind people to check those generators now, while they have time to make adjustments, make sure those generators work, and by all means, make sure those generators are properly ventilated, because every year, you read about generators that are cranked up too close to where people are sleeping, and bad things happen. So be careful with generators. But that's important, we will watch that. As discussed, we will be very, very attentive to the direction of this hurricane, and of course, if it turns in our direction, we will take appropriate actions. We have our emergency plan in place, we've exercised it, and I believe that, I feel confident that we will take the necessary measures to get through this, should it come our way, all right? That's all, is, any other comments or announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
President, we, now, I believe every?
Oh, yes.
Has an actual copy of the?
Does everyone have all the budgets out that they need?
Should be, the one that's stapled together.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Lawshie, you have all you need?
Apologize for not giving that to you earlier.
Mr. Platt, do you have all you need, budget?
Yes, sir, I would like to address the rest of the council when we?
Okay.
Have a few minutes.
All right. Mr. Webb, any questions? Do you have all the information on it?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Again, I would ask the council, please take this information home, study it, ask us questions about it. We have 10 working days to review this, to understand it, to get it firmly in our minds. If you have questions, ask, but there's no such thing as a foolish question, it's just the one that is not asked. We want you to be comfortable about this. If we need to make adjustments or amendments, we'll do so, but this is the heart of what we do this time of year, is developing a planning tool, a financial tool, for the next fiscal year, and it's very, very serious business, as we all know. And I know you'll do your best to make this work. Any other comments or announcements? Yeah, I got that coming up next. Let's see, next will be public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, Marshall and Mary Gardner.
Okay, all right, well, please come on up, and you see the podium? You have three minutes, so we are all ears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ten D's?
Yes, sir.
My name's Marshall, this is my wife, Mary Gardner. We reside at 4241 Pamona Parkway, and we've lived there for almost eight years. Now, when we first moved into the house, it was very pleasant house to live in, we could enjoy our patio, park views and such, what, staffed side. But over the past few years, there's a tire store in front of us, and the tires is piling up big time. They're probably six feet above the privacy fence, and it's a huge pile, and I believe it's a fire hazard, and we can't even walk outside of our house without getting mosquitoes. We cannot take our dogs outside, we can't even have company come over. I mean, we literally, when we open our back doors, we go outside to the carport, mosquitoes fly into our house. I have a couple bugs that, and I always just wanted to try to bring that to the council, see what we could do about getting some done about all the tires there. I don't know if there's ordinance for the city.
What was the address, sir?
I live at 4241 Pamona Parkway, which is by Pamona, P-A-M.
Pamona?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Pamona.
Yes, excuse me, I had a stroke about two months ago.
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure I heard the street right, that's all. 4241 Pamona Parkway.
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, I really, you know, I try to be a good neighbor and good mom, but you know, it's hard for me to even get out in my yard to clean it up. I mean, I, we literally have to spray down with mosquito dope, just to walk inside. And I hadn't seen a mosquito truck in two years.
Okay.
I don't know if we still have one that works in the city or not, but I have, we haven't seen one come down ours.
What's a, what's a good number to reach you, sir?
Our house phone is 251644.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and thank you both for bringing it forward today.
I even got pictures of it. I have my own.
Yes, ma'am, I'll, we'll take a look at them.
The reason I'm bringing it up to y'all, because it's, you know, it's a nuisance and a course for us being there, and it's just, you know, I have a lot of oak trees and stuff like that, and there's ever fire bacteria, it's coming on our property, you know, it's real dangerous.
And you're concerned about the mosquitoes and the, is there?
It's a health hazard.
I understand, sir.
But I appreciate y'all taking the time and listening to us today.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I will say that we'll do more than look into it, I pulled up a drought of an ordinance that Mr. Smith has been working on. I think that we have become a real honest-to-goodness government entity, because everything takes forever to get done, but it's in the works. I appreciate that.
I have one question.
Sure, yes, sir.
The tax store, does the business face muffin room?
Yes.
It's, there's a couple of other citizens that complained, too, so.
I've actually had to call the fire department there last year, because there was burning some flats and rubber, but I asked them to quit doing it, and they quit doing that. And I hadn't had no more, because it got so bad, you couldn't, I mean, it was, you could smell it in my house, it was coming through, but, and you know, I hate to complain, but like I said, it's, it's a shame when you can't even enjoy your own place.
It's a thank you call, Lee, what?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Yes, sir.
Get everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, public comment?
That's all.
That's all?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right, we are now to item 12, other business that might come before the meeting. Mr. Platt, I wanted to give you your opportunity, you wanted to address something?
Yes, sir, I'll try to be brief, but you know me, but.
Is that a promise?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to let the council know that I'm aware of the work that Councilman Smith and the finance committee have put into this budget, and I am not going to disagree with what Mr. Smith has presented, I'm ready to approve that budget when he asks me to. However, I have concerns that I want to make public, and we're just gonna have to resolve these issues, and I believe that, well, I know for a fact, Mr. Smith knows these problems also, and he is looking for a solution. I've asked the chief to present you with this chart. I don't think the average citizen in any way at all understands how a fire department works, I do not, but the color-coded stuff, I think, makes it easier, okay? I am in odds with a few council persons, but we need more firemen, period, we need more firemen, okay? We need more equipment, and this budget that is proposed is very, very tight, and I have a question as to what will happen to the rainy day funds, what I call it, budget stabilization Mr. Smith and I have different opinions on that, it's nothing at all, he thinks that we can cut that more than I would like, but again, I'm going to approve whatever Mr. Smith asks me to approve, because I trust the man and his finance committee. You heard the sheriff or the captain earlier, we need a minimum of two deputies and a supervisor and an investigator. We've been discussing for a year now, we need to move a station off of Moore's Hill. We've got a lot of needs, and it's gonna take a lot of money, it's gonna take a lot of money, and I just didn't want you guys to forget, when we had the opportunity to vote on this budget, we need some assurance that these needs are not gonna be overlooked. That's all I really have to say, it's just that we have some immediate needs, and money is tight. I'm disappointed that the finance committee do not want to address the capital funds for next year, and we're gonna be asked to vote on the budget without knowing, I guess, what's we gonna do with that money. But again, I trust the committee, I do trust the committee, but we're gonna have to work together, and some of these things keep getting put off, and then keep, keep getting put off, and it is time to put an end to that. We need a station, we need more law enforcement, we need equipment, we need a location for a fire station, which I know we cannot afford, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me, so let me make a statement here, a budget is a, is a guideline.
Right.
We have to have a budget, and if something comes up, we even did this on our church, we had something arise, we met the, the money was in the bank, and we took care of the emergency. The budget is just guideline, we gotta have some, something to go by, gotta have some limits to a certain extent, but if emergencies arise, we can make an exception to the budget.
Mr. Webb?
We can take care of that.
I think you and I talked enough that you know, I feel that this is an emergency that exists today, and we, we've done a lot, we have done a lot.
Well, I know, I was in law enforcement for a while, and I know one thing, and everybody in here will agree with me, public safety comes first, everything else second, public first, public safety comes first, and we're gonna take care of that.
I just don't want the council to lose sight of what, what I feel that we, we need to keep foremost.
We will take care of decisions, whatever it takes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other business that might come before the meeting?
I move your adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you all.